Good afternoon. Welcome to the hot city of Sioux Falls. Today is our budget hearing of Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. So we're going to jump right into it, and I know that all the department heads and everybody presenting really wants to win this year's best budget presentation. So we'll be keeping track up here. We'll have a final tally when everybody's done. So we'll jump right in to finance. Sean Pritchett, please. Oh, and I'm going to make one note for the council. Five twenty is our stop time so we can get to public comment. So if you do have a long list of questions, then you can always follow up with the department head later on. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance, and it's my pleasure to come before you this afternoon to give a overview, a financial overview of the 2023 proposed budget as well as the five-year capital program which will be brought, is being brought forward, released, and brought forward for consideration and approval in September. To give you kind of a snapshot of kind of what our budget process looks like, the budget itself, it provides that roadmap for our city and a plan for allocating our finite resources to maximize the quality and efficiency of our governmental services as we provide those to the residents and businesses in our community. The actual process takes over nine months. We start in January with strategy and planning sessions that kind of goes through those first several months, and it ends up being with public hearings and adoption in August and September. As we get into the, as we get into these public hearings, these budget hearings as well as adoption, this is the point where communication is most important. Two weeks ago, the mayor presented his budget to the council and the residents of Sioux Falls, and we released the proposed budget. And over the next four weeks, each of the departments will be coming forward to you to present the details of their budget and answer questions that you have. Public input will take place in September. This input will be listened to and taken into consideration as the council takes its actions on September 13th to approve the 2023 budget. Here's a quick focus on the timeline here over the next several weeks. As you can see, we have all of the department presentations here between August 2nd and August 23rd. And then, of course, we have our budget public hearing on September 6th and final adoption on the 23rd. In September, the council will approve three parts or three key parts and two documents that will be, that will essentially deliver the 2023 budget and the five-year capital program. These two documents are the appropriations ordinance and the budget resolution, which will also include the 2023 through 2027 capital program approval. The appropriation ordinance, the first item, establishes the legal level of authority by fund for each department for all tax-supported funds. This includes both operating and capital expenses, along with the means of financing the budget. The budget resolution encompasses all funds and departments and the capital program for all departments. The budget provides a guideline and a planning tool for the non-tax-supported and enterprise utilities and internal service and trust funds, but these funds rely upon adequate cash flow to meet their demands of service levels. They are not bound by the budget constraints or appropriations as taxes are not used to support these services. The five-year capital program is approved as part of that budget resolution, but within the program are capital projects and other capital equipment purchases. The projects and equipment themselves establish the budgetary authority for those capital acquisitions. However, departments can transfer between its, between categories within its own department, and those are notified to the council on a regular basis as part of your weekly meetings. Finally, one of the action items that's not identified here but will come along with this is the property tax refund program, which this council moved forward last year. As part of that, the process was said that it would have to be re-approved every year. So we have funded that as part of the budget for this year. It is administered through the housing department, or it is actually administered by finance, funded through the housing department. So it has been funded as part of the budget, but it does require an action item on the part of the council. The budget is planned and reflects how our city is funding various public services. So as you go through the various presentations over the course of the next several weeks, you'll also see several themes resonating as part of how we conceptualized the budget for this year. And the first theme, that is public service. When it comes to providing any service, it takes people. When it comes to providing reliable and essential public services, the city teams, they deliver these services 365 days a year. Our people, the city's teams, they deliver these services, and we seek to hire public servants at heart, and we hire people that want to make a difference and want to be engaged, being a top priority of our city. These services are executed with purpose and focus under the one Sioux Falls framework. And over the next several weeks, you'll see departments walk through their budgets and the aims for delivering these services with excellence. Another guiding principle for us is the city team is prioritizing initiatives that keep Sioux Falls investable. This goes beyond responding to the basic needs and current challenges. It requires anticipating the future needs as well as making strategic and intentional investments that pay dividends over the long term. Our teams continue to collaborate and ensure that we are having one plan, one strategy for our city and the investments that we make. A couple of examples of this that was part of our budget process for this year is we brought together all of our internal teams. We talked about their departments, what their growth plans would be, all collectively as a group. We compared that with the tier maps and the expectations for growth for our community so that we could be better aware of what those needs are across the city and how we allocate the resources necessary to meet those needs. Second example of this is our strategic land acquisition team, which is a smaller segment, but it is an opportunity for us as a city to come together and think thoughtfully about future land acquisitions. As a city, we are essentially running a lot of mini businesses, each department being a business in and of itself, and we all have land needs. And talking to them and thinking about them strategically as a group is important, and we also know that we can't await until we absolutely need the land before we start having those conversations. We need to think more thoughtfully about making those acquisitions in the future and making those now. The future of our, of our community is, of course, our next generation, so kids and families is very important to the way we rethought about this budget. And we want to stay focused on the future of this community and improving the overall quality of life. You will hear from departments in this budget about how they are placing an emphasis and bringing attention to kids and families as part of their goals. Public service, being an investable city, and being a high quality of life for kids and families, all can be accomplished with a commitment to fiscal stewardship that is principled, efficient, responsible, and allocates our resources in a prudent, in a prudent manner. It is these themes again that you will see resonate throughout the budget. Other areas of the budget that were important and continue to be focused on is our commitment to public safety for our community, a commitment to improving issues with workforce and affordable housing, because we know that those are areas that we as a city cannot accomplish on our own, and we must seek to work collaboratively with partners in order to make meaningful difference in each of these areas. We will also be rolling out and be discussing some transformative ideas as it relates to public transit and how we make that system more effective for users and expands the opportunity for people to use the public transit system that uses our resources more efficiently and expands the scope of that service throughout our community in a hybrid model. Lastly, basic infrastructure continues to be significantly important to us as a community in order to help facilitate the growth that we are experiencing. Roads being a key portion of that, making sure we are maintaining and repairing and expanding our road system is key, particularly for our capital program. This graphic here you see is new for this year. We, this is actually on our budget page for the city's website. You can see, for those of you who've been here for several years, we've worked hard, the staff has worked very hard and been very creative in trying to create a budget document that is usable, accessible to our residents in our community, but also a good decision-making document for you as well. And this graphic is meant to help expand upon that to show people exactly what we are investing in each of these important service areas. This graphic is one we've used regularly over the last several years, and it's one that a lot of people point to and like. This is specific to where do tax dollars go? So not necessarily where do we have governmental transfers and licenses and fees and permits, but where are their tax dollars going? And specifically, a majority, almost 60% of all tax dollars that we receive in this community are devoted to two things, highways and streets and public safety. Other areas, culture and rec is about 20 cents of our tax dollars, public health, five cents, general government is only eight cents. As we go into the budget and as we do it in our monthly financials, we take a look at what's happening in the economy. In developing the budget, we remain cognizant of the trends in the overall economy and how they interact with our revenues and expenditures, expectations. And we recognize that there is a variability to a spicy economy that we're experiencing right now, and while we can't perfectly project where the economy will go and when, we do work to anticipate for potential changes and formulate flexibility in our budget forecasts. We're not just focusing on 2023. We are modeling for years ahead and ensuring that we have sustainability of our financial systems. In looking forward, we recognize that the strengths we have, these include labor force at high participation rates, record-breaking construction activities, solid sales tax, and a consistent reliable property tax revenue. We also recognize there are headwinds that we are currently facing, including inflation, supply chain issues, and variability in that economy. We continue to anticipate for these impacts in the overall budget forecasting models, and we continue to adapt and ensure that we can mitigate these potential negative impacts. We know that there will always be variability in the economy, and our ability to adapt is our key strength, and our ability to continue moving forward and making prudent and timely investments is important to supporting the growth of our city and our community. As you look at these inflationary impacts, we do look at these monthly, but as a city, as we've discussed, we are not immune to these inflationary pressures. These are impacts to us in terms of equipment, chemicals, fuel, road construction, and wages. Supply chains continue to be, and put pressures on our teams. You can see a list off to the left. Those are some of the more significant ones that we've been challenged with. It isn't out of the norm for us to order 12 to 16 months ahead of time. Our teams are constantly dancing to make the supply orders. Lead times make that very difficult for our city in terms of the annual budget process. We have many vehicles that we have purchased in October and in January that we have not yet received, and honestly, we do not know if we will receive them or we will have to reorder them. And so that is the challenge that we have in many respects. This graph above shows how upset our supply chain is currently. That zero or red line that you see, that's a balanced supply chain in terms of efficiency. When it's above that line, you have greater efficiency in the supply chain, and when it is below, that's when you're experiencing significant shortages, and you can see visually where we're at in 2021, certainly some of the most supply chain issues that we have experienced in more than a decade. We talk about this monthly as well. We do have strong employment. We have growing employment at a, at a relatively reasonable pace, but we are at full employment like the rest of our state. We continue to see record-breaking construction occurring in our community, surpassed $1 billion in values through July compared to 1.1 for last year. Kind of hard to kind of think about that in terms of the growth that we are experiencing here as a community, which is significant. The positive aspect of this is the diversification that we are seeing in those building permits. Areas like office, retail, education, institutional, those that were hit very hard during COVID have rebounded significantly, and obviously multifamily continues to be also a strong contributor to the building permits that we are seeing here locally. As we look at this economy, I think it's important, and as we look at this budget, to keep perspective that we can give assurance as a city in periods of times of uncertainty. When people may be uncertain about things in their personal lives, they do not have to be concerned about their city. There will be consistency of services, and we will remain committed to sound financial decisions. We keep appropriate reserves. We are always looking ahead to anticipate, and we financially model over the long term all of our funds, not just looking at where we will be in a single year, but where will we be in 10 years. We take that balance and strategic approach when maintaining our ability to adapt when things change, and we're prepared to be strategic and not overreact, because when we do overreact and when we become overly conservative and not investing at the right things at the right time, it actually costs us more. Not every community has this luxury, but Sioux Falls does. And lastly, we stay positive, and we leverage the community strengths that we are experiencing. How do we leverage that unprecedented growth? When others are going to pull back, we have the opportunity and responsibility to lean forward and model confidence for our community and in our city. The overall budget totals $646.2 million. This is actually about an $8 million decrease from the 2022 budget, but this decrease is due to timing of certain projects, primarily capital projects that can swing the overall budget from year to year. There are three key areas or sections of our budget. There are appropriated funds, there are enterprise funds, and then there are internal service and trust funds. So the appropriated funds, these are what we talk about in terms of the tax appropriated funds or tax-supported funds. These are your appropriated funds. There's intentional balance within these funds, as many of them have dedicated sources and uses, the largest being the general fund, which is our basic operating account, which pays for services such as fire, police, parks, library, highways, and streets. This fund is largely supported almost evenly between property taxes and the first penny sales tax. The capital fund or the sales and use tax fund is the second fund and the one we probably speak about the most, and this supports our capital projects for our service departments, and includes paying for things like police vehicles, fire stations, parks, and recreation, equipment, pools, books for the libraries, and of course, roads. The entertainment tax fund has a smaller, a smaller list of items that is taxed on, and we've discussed in the past, related to restaurants and lodging and so forth, that is used and dedicated specifically to the promotion of our entertainment venues, and that includes both capital and operations. And then the other remaining appropriated funds such as housing, train, transit, and storm drainage all have their own dedicated sources of revenues for those particular funds. The second set of funds is those enterprise utility funds such as water, sanitary landfill, water reclamation, and public parking. These funds are not tax-appropriated. They will be included in the budget, but they're not subject to appropriation or to the limitations on their budget that you would have in the other funds, because they are driven by the demand for services and they're supported by charges for these services. They are all by policy, self-funding based on charges for these services. These funds have rate models that are updated annually. They are approved by this council every two to four years, and the next rate approval will be in the 2024 budget. Dr. Carter will be presenting most of these budgets as part of, as they sit within the public works, public works, and that'll be presented on August 16th. The last fund there is the internal service funds, and these are used to be the most cost-effective and efficient in the delivery of specific services. Many of these, you might say, are duplicated budgeted items because they're appropriated out of the appropriated funds, and then they are brought into the internal service funds where then they are budgeted back out again. So these funds include centralized facilities. This is the newest one that was created a few years ago. This is, helps to manage and maintain all of our city-owned buildings except for utility plants and in-park buildings. We have fleet management, which supports the collaboration and sharing of equipment across the city. We have a risk management fund, which supports the city assets in terms of identifying risks and mitigating loss exposure, areas of insurance. We ensure that they have proper reserves, and there is no major budget impact for this fund this year. Workers' compensation and health benefits provides employees' health, dental, and life insurance, plus supporting our employees who are injured in the course of their job. There's also no major changes as a result for these funds. And then we have the technology revolving fund, which we are now referring to as the Enterprise Network Systems Fund. This fund uses primarily, is used, was used primarily to replace our desktop replacement systems. Oftentimes, technology is the first thing that gets cut when times get tough, and then you end up having to clean that up after the fact. And so this fund, by bringing in resources on a regular basis, is able to make sure that we stay consistent with our technology investments. However, as technology has changed over the last several years, the, the purpose of this fund continues to expand to ensure that we provide sustainable and a strategic approach to maintaining, upgrading our network systems and ensuring that we have a reliable and a secure system overall. You will see an increase in all departments within the rentals category to maintain our technology equipment and ensure that our network is reliable and protected, and so that will hit everybody's budget, and they'll address those increases. And then the last one is the fiduciary funds. These are the two closed pension funds for the city that were closed in 2013. New employees since that time are now in the state retirement system. We have a stable fund. It's well-managed. These funds are invested just like any 401K, and as of the end of last year, we're over 100% funded on an actual basis. Removing the internal and pension funds, you can see 80% of our budget, or $342 million, is directly committed to providing basic services for the city. Services that support safe and efficient highways and street systems, keeps water flowing to homes and businesses, protecting buildings and structures. Less than 4% of the public services budget is related to general administration or support services. Another way you might look at this, you see in the bar graph below there, is that 33% of the budget is dedicated to capital acquisition, 31% is personnel, 12% is support services. So support services means our joint ventures such as metro communications, museums, triage center. It also includes our support for things like the Washington Pavilion, Great Plains Zoo, and our pass-throughs to organizations like Experience Sioux Falls in terms of the lodging and bid taxes. The city, for what we spend on consulting, engineering, and modeling, and planning services is less than 1% of the total capital and operating budgets on a collective basis. And one thing you will see at the bottom of each presentation this year is a bar, or a bar similar to that, and you'll be able to see kind of what the distinction is between capital, personnel, and other expenditures within that particular budget. This takes a look of all those primary funds. From a accounting perspective, we segregate everything into funds. They're a little like mini checking accounts, you might say, in terms of they have their own dedicated revenues, and then their dedicated expenditures that are expended from each of those funds, and they pay those day-to-day operating expenditures. So you can see, obviously, the general fund is the largest at 215 million, and that is 100% operating-related. Your sales tax fund at 107 million is the second largest, and that is all capital-related. And then typically, most of the other funds are a mix of either capital and operating as both of them. Supporting the budget, we have revenues of $654.9 million based on our projections. Of that amount, about 45% is taxes. The two penny sales tax plus the entertainment tax plus property taxes are all incorporated into that figure. Other sources include charges for goods and services, such as those that are charged by our utility systems. The other one that, that may stick out a little bit is investments at 60 million. You might consider how we would have investments of 60 million, kind of given what's happening in the economy, but this is related to the pension fund, so that accounts for most of that particular item as well. Inner governmental is primarily grants that we're receiving or contributions from federal or state sources. Property taxes are a stable source of revenue for our city. We continue to see solid growth in this. For the 2023 budget, we are budgeting at a 3.2% growth rate and a 3% CPI or inflation. So on that inflation side of things, our inflationary adjustment typically lags back two years because of the way that we pay our property taxes in this state, and then it caps out at 3%. So you're relevant to what inflation is. It will never be higher than 3%. Since we are not immune to inflation, this puts natural pressures on us as a city to maximize the revenue sources that we do have to continue to meet the demands for services in our, in our community in light of an inflationary environment. That CPI adjustment for, excuse me, the growth component adds about $2.4 million in revenue. The CPI adjustment adds about $2.2 million overall to the budget. Sales tax revenues are the most critical source of our revenue, and it tends to be a little more variable than obviously the property taxes. In terms of trending in revenues, if you look back over the last 10 years, average growth has been 5.7%. Currently, sales taxes are running at 13.7% over 2021. We'll talk a little bit about this more later, but obviously inflation, which is running at 9% since June, has, is having major impacts in terms of the numbers we are seeing. So we're really looking at what the growth is over inflation rather than the actual hard number during these type, type of periods. The 2023 budget is built on a conservative 8% growth expectation reset for 2022. So when we go into budgeting, we look at the current year and we say, okay, we budgeted this year at 4%. We think, or we're going to estimate it at 8%, and then we're going to build next year off of that 8% assumption for this year in terms of our sales tax revenues. So we remain conservative in 2023, 2024, which we're estimating at 4% in our model as well as in the budget. That way, you know, if we exceed the 8% for this year, that's great, but it also helps us hedge against something that's going to be less than 4% in a future year, because if we hit a zero like we did a few years back, or if we hit a 2%, that has significant ramifications for our budget, given how much we rely on those, those property taxes, or excuse me, those sales taxes. We have been able to adapt when sales taxes have grow, have shrunk after peaking in the late 1990s. 2008 and 2020, we experienced negative sales tax growth, but we adapted, and we continue to grow our community. So no matter what, our plan and balance allows us to be prepared to adapt to changing circumstances without significant disruptions to core services. If changes are needed, it is not easy. We all appreciate the city services and amenities that we make. We have to make our city the best place to live, work, and grow, but we also have to make sure that we meet the core needs of our city first and foremost. The general fund as the primary fund gets the most attention in terms of its operations and, and the funds in terms of the revenues and expenditures. About 80% of our general fund budget is comprised of tax revenues, primarily those sales taxes and property taxes that I spoke of. These two major funding sources play a critical role in our ability to address the service needs of the community. A majority of the general fund budget goes to support public safety with nearly 40% of the general fund supporting police and fire rescue. However, careful consideration is given to every department's needs when putting together the 2023 budget. Overall, you will see a $14.7 million increase in the general fund for 2023, which represents a 7% increase on the operating side, but again, this is less than the inflation rate that we're currently experiencing. There are also included in this various one-time expenditures that impact that number as well as inflationary impacts for things like fuel and so forth that we're taking, trying to take into consideration. In terms of budgeted use for reserves, we always budget some use of reserves every year because we know that we will turn back 2% to 3% of the budget at the end of the year, but we don't necessarily budget for that, but we include that as part of our model for the general fund. You can see in last year, we were budgeting at $4.8 million use of reserves, or excuse me, in the current year. Based on the current revenue expectations, we probably will not be taking $4.8 million out of reserves at this point. However, in next year, we are budgeting revenues of 213.3 million, expenditures of almost 215 for a $1.6 million use of reserves, which is much less than we have had in the last several years. How we get to our capacity for what we can use for reserves is based primarily on our long-term model of the general fund. Ultimately, by policy, we have a 25% general fund reserve requirement. That means on December 31st, we have to have three months of expenditures sitting in reserve for our budget. We take a look at that model over the course of the next several years, and we watch and track what, based on our expectations, what that, what that reserve will look like in the out years, and based on that, then we are able to work backwards and determine what use of reserves we would have for the current year's budget. The inflation component is key part of those property tax revenues. Postponing or deferring the inflation increase can have dramatic impact, particularly in future years. The CPI component of the property tax revenue generates, as I said, $2.2 million in 2023, and over that 20, but if you look at that over the next 10-year period, it equates to approximately $28 million. So just deferring that for one year has significant impact on our reserves over the long term. It's been established policy for us to maintain that 25% reserve requirement. As you can see, we're not able to achieve that if we defer that basic piece of the CPI adjustment. As we look at the capital program, keeping Sioux Falls investable is another great guiding principle for our city. This year's sales tax program continues to emphasize investments in highways and streets as it has in the past. We are dedicating 62% to 66% each year to the both expansion, maintenance, and reconstruction of our highways and streets. We continue to balance roads with recognizing that we need a livable community, which is key to workforce attraction as well as our development efforts, and on average, 9% of the program is invested in culture and recreation before you consider debt service. However, if you look at what we have incurred debt for, it is highly leaning toward those quality of life type of initiatives. The second penny sales tax supports that debt service as well for the long term in large-scale projects. The city has given thoughtful and intentional decision-making when it comes to bonding for projects, and only bonds for major infrastructure projects that have a widespread community impact. And as you can see and noted, a majority of that has been in the areas of culture and recreation. Examples of this include the West Side Library, the Junior Football Complex, the main library expansion, Drake Springs, Harmadon, and the River Greenway. If you look at where we have been from a debt service perspective and where we are projected to go in the projected to go, and this does include the quality-of-life bond that was incorporated into the capital program both last year and this year, you can see that while overall we project the sales tax revenue or the capital fund to continue to increase, that orange line with the red dots, that is our debt service requirement in our bond indentures. So basically, they say you can't spend more than fifty cents of the money you take in in the sales and capital fund on debt service. The dotted lines there in black is showing what we project to actually spend from our capital fund. So while fifty percent is our debt service coverage requirement from our bondholders, we try to keep it at thirty percent or lower, just from a financial responsibility standpoint. This chart we show you often, but it's just always good to compare where we are relative to our peer communities, and as we've noticed, Sioux Falls continues on a per capita basis to maintain some of the lowest debt service relative to any of those communities. And in closing here on my presentation, I will note the importance of playing the long game. In the months ahead, you will see a number of pundits in the news talking about what may or may not happen with our economy and when, and while these experts will add perspective and insights, no one can exactly predict what may or may not happen. But during these times of uncertainty, there are a number of things that we do know and we can rely upon. The headwinds being felt in the current economy are transitory. They will course correct over time. Our residents can rely upon the fact that we, as a city, have the capacity to adapt as circumstances change. This is one of our greatest strengths. And while this budget sets the course for 2023, we remain focused on the long term, and we will take actions today that maximize opportunities for our community long into the future. Pandemic is a great example of this. We adapted. We were judicious in the use of our taxpayer resources, but we didn't lay people off. We reallocated resources. When we closed the event center, we didn't lay people off because we knew, after this would pass, how challenging it would be to bring those people back to work in the next environment. So while other communities are struggling to rehire, we're moving forward. We took actions like paying off twenty-five million dollars of debt. We invested in the water reclamation plan expansion. We set up the centralized facilities fund to better maintain our city-owned assets. We continue to make foundational investments that position us to grow. With this solid foundation, we have a unique opportunity to lean forward even during uncertain times. This is where we will excel. We have the capacity to invest when others will pull back, and we have the opportunity over the next several years to make transformative investments that will build upon the incredible community where we live and work in, from Veterans Highway to Jacobson Plaza, the DSU Applied Research Lab, Public Safety Training Facility, and the proposed quality-of-life bond. These type of strategic and balanced investments will strengthen our community. They will diversify our economy and continue to make Sioux Falls the city of choice to live and raise a family. I will be presenting the finance department's specific budget here later in this budget hearing, but at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have related to the overall financial picture for the city of Sioux Falls in the 2023 budget.
Thank you. Counselors' questions? Counselor Knight, sir?
Well, first of all, excellent presentation. You did hit on this a little bit, so I was going to needle you a little bit, but you beat me to the punch, because you first, I mean, you led with the headline of the entire budget being down two-point-nine percent, and I was going to just mention, and you mentioned it, that it's incredibly skewed by the non-appropriate funds, particularly the water reclamation bond. It looks like that's what's skewing it. There is a huge bond, a hundred million bucks or whatever, and then a smaller one. So that one goes down fifty-four-point-five percent, which offsets a lot of increases and a lot of others. And then I was going to mention there's a seven-point-three percent increase in the general and the capital fund. My question about the general and the capital, of these increases, how much of it is generally inflationary, like recognizing things that fuels going up and all these other things versus new spend? Do you have a handle on that? Like new employees and things like that, so?
A lot, most of everything, like it is every year, is related to wage adjustments as it's related to existing employees that, you know, as Bill will present next, we have negotiated agreements that we know for 2023, so we have to incorporate those in. We have step adjustments within that. Another piece of that is what the commitment we're making to part-time employees and seasoned employees, given the challenges we've seen in some of the, so, you know, the part-time employees certainly is being inflationary-driven overall as the economy kind of rebalances itself. But there are other related components as well. So if you look at the capital program, you know, twenty percent increase is what we embedded into it based on what we anticipated to be cost escalation. So that really drove on the capital side. It did have impact on the operating side as well, but not to as much of an extent because of that twenty percent impact on construction costs.
Thank you.
Other questions, counselors? I'll have a few. First off, thank you very much for fully fending the pension funds that we administer. I appreciate that, and so do a lot of other retirees. Director Pritchard, are we in a recession?
It's a good question. I would say probably not, not at this point. I know there's, and you can make the case for local versus nationally. You can certainly say we are not locally at this time. Nationally, there's some indicators that we are with two quarters of negative growth, but it's still not significant enough that I would contemplate it to be recessionary because you're still seeing general growth, or at least pockets. But I see Sioux Falls, and so we're still in the growing trend right now.
Thank you. A question on the investment income of fifty-nine-point-six million dollars. How do we arrive, and what are our investments?
So the investments are determined. We have two boards, and then we have an investment policy. And so the investment policy balances between different types of investments. We have an investment manager that works with the various pension boards that makes decisions, but they're constantly rebalancing, you know, over time to make sure we stay within that balanced portfolio based on what their policy is. We don't chase returns our best, and we've done very well, if you look at us, over twenty years in terms of how we performed relative to our peers, and we've done that by staying the course and just continuing to have a balanced approach. So that's kind of how those investments are handled. So you have, with pension funds, you are able to invest in things like equities and stocks and bonds and other types of things that we, as a city, cannot do with our taxpayer dollars. We must invest those pretty much in certificates of deposit, money markets, checking accounts, and primarily U.S. Treasuries.
Thank you. Since the Wayfair decision and the internet sales taxes come on board, we've seen a pretty significant increase. And I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but if you could get to us how much we're actually receiving as a breakdown for the internet sales tax, it'd be interesting for those of us that were here pre-internet sales tax budget to now to see how that's affected us. I'd be interested in that. That's all the questions I have, if there's none other.
I will note in our monthly financials, when we do by industry analysis, there's a line item called remote retail sales. It's not perfect because that's how the state categorizes essentially what they believe to be those internet sales taxes, and so that's probably the best figures you would see on a monthly basis, and that has been consistently up over the last two years, although at the last financial report, as noted, it was down for the first time on a month-over-month basis. So seeing some changing consumer behavior there.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to human resources.
Good afternoon, Council. Bill O'Toole, Human Resources. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to talk about, obviously, one of our most important assets, our personnel, our employees for the city of Sioux Falls. And the 2023 budget would bring us up to one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty employees. And I want to walk through it kind of at a high level, talk about the cost, the numbers, talk about some history, how we got here, and also look forward. At the highest level, as Director Pritchett just mentioned, the six-hundred-and-forty-six-point-two million dollars, if you're looking at personnel costs, personnel makes up about twenty-six percent or a hundred-and-sixty-six-point-three million dollars. And that represents a five-point-three percent or an eight-point-four million dollar increase over the prior year. And again, at a high-level breakdown to explain those dollars, eight-point-four million, it represents an adjustment and an investment for our part-time employees of one-point-three million dollars. New positions that you heard earlier in the mayor's presentation, thirty new positions at two-point-seven million dollars, and kind of our ongoing normal merits, colas, and benefits increases of four-point-four million to account for the eight-point-four million dollars. If we quickly transition to the general fund budget, again, that is where we have the vast majority of our employees, eighty-five percent of them, or one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-one of our employees, and the other one-hundred-and-ninety-nine are in the enterprise funds. The personnel budget comprises sixty-four percent of the two-hundred-and-fourteen-point-nine million dollars or a hundred-and-thirty-three-point-five million dollars. That's a six-point-eight million dollar increase over the prior year. And again, a breakdown of that six-point-eight million dollars is this, two-point-two million for new positions, or twenty-five of the thirty in the general fund. That investment that I referred to earlier of one-point-three million, again, for investment for our part-time employees, and then you've got another three-point-three million in wages and benefits to get to the six-point-eight million dollar increase. I always like to show the council kind of that look, that historical look. This is giving you a twelve-year look of how the personnel cost as a percent of the expenditure budget looks over time. And just, again, at a high level, we had a low in 2013 at sixty-three percent, a high of sixty-eight percent in 2018 and 19, and the 2023 is at sixty-four percent. So you don't see a huge variation on a percentage basis over the prior twelve years. Again, I think, as this council knows, we've been very fortunate. You've come with us on this journey. We've made some significant investments. Our part-time team is very important to us. It's been challenging over the years, and as part of a phased approach, we started back in 2021, and the council supported a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar supplement primarily to support our aquatic staff, and that had very good returns for us in terms of that investment. Council also supported a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget increase in 2022. That allowed us to address the operation side of Parks and Recreation along with some library staff. And here again, we're coming full circle, making another investment to ensure that our part-time dollars in 2023 at one-point-three million dollars allows us to be very competitive and get those folks on board. And if you're wondering, our part-time wages make up about ten percent of our total wages package, and ninety-one percent for full-time. But they're an important piece of our team, and we appreciate the council's support over the past few years in trying to address that issue. Another slide I'd like to share is looking at our part-time employees and turning that into what we call a part-time equivalent. So obviously, we have many more employees than what you see shown here on this screen, but when we roll up all those hours into full-time employees or two-thousand-and-eighty hours, this is the conversion to get to a full-time equivalent. And you can clearly see from this chart that Parks and Recreation is by far, in a way, one of those areas that gets heavy utilization for our part-time staff on an annual basis. As you heard Director Pritchett talk about, the full-time employees, our commitment there. If you're not aware, we're already in and have established labor contracts with each of our respective bargaining units, fire, police, and AFSMI that go through 2023, so that information is kind of locked in, if you will. One of the things we're very focused on, and you've heard some discussion about this, and part of our employer of choice plan, is to more frequently take a look at our compensation and benefits package. We're currently in the process of securing a consultant to engage in that study. We had an additional hundred thousand dollars in our budget for that purpose. And while we normally would do that study every eight to ten years, because of the recent environment, we decided we need to take a closer look and really rely on data to drive some decisions as we move forward. So we committed to doing that study. We're in the process of, right now, selecting that consultant, and that project work probably is going to take six months to complete. And that, like I said, that will inform us on changes that we need to make going forward. You know, that action, in addition to the support that council and mayor have given us in the past, to pursue that intentional focus on being an employer of choice, is really going to help us. And as you know, we've already implemented some of those criteria already. For example, we included the lump-sum payment for what we call the retention or an inflationary factor of two-thousand dollars for all city employees. This year, we provided a five-hundred-dollar referral incentive for employees. We've expanded the use of sick leave to help support our employees with family-related issues for maternity and paternity. We enhanced the vacation accrual schedules for our employees, and we provided a bank for new employees so they had some ability to take some vacation time when they arrive. All of those strategies were rooted in kind of three different buckets or three components of either strategies of retaining employees, attracting employees, or dealing with the well-being of our employees. And we appreciate the council's support as we've done that and as we continue to move forward. I do like to share some employment statistics. You know, we're not immune in this environment as well. We're continuing to adjust. I always like to share what I call front-door statistics and back-door statistics. What you see before you hear is the average number of employment applications that we're receiving for the positions that we have in the city of Sioux Falls. You can see in the far right that that has been a slight dip. There have been some more challenges when we do go out to the market to try to fill our positions, and really emphasizes why the focus on the employer of choice is so important going forward and making sure we continue to invest in the city employees as we go forward. On the other side of the equation, kind of what I refer to as the back door, the people leaving you, this is a little longer duration of time, a ten-year period, looking at our turnover rates. This is an aggregate. The blue bar is our total turnover, and the yellow bar is the turnover without retirements. Another way to look at it is then that gap between the gold bar and the blue bar is our actual retirements. And you can see there's a slight upward trend, and I'll talk more about that a little bit later when we get into our HR budget and why we're seeking additional FTE to help meet the needs of the organization as well. I would also share a little more detail as it relates to the 2021 numbers. Those are aggregate numbers, nine-point-eight percent total turnover rate, six percent without retirements. If you look at a police turnover, for example, their turnover was eleven-point-zero-seven percent. Without retirements, it was nine-point-two-nine. Fire had a nine-point-zero-nine percent turnover rate. Without retirements, it was two-point-eight-seven, and our general group had nine-point-five-five percent turnover or five-point-six-three without retirements. So just a little more detail as it relates to those numbers. There's a fair amount of information on this slide, just to kind of get you familiar with it. The blue bars, this is looking at our population growth over the last thirty years. Down on the bottom, you can see the number of city, full-time city employees, and the gold bar in the middle represents the number of city employees per ten-thousand population over that period of time through the 2023 budget. Again, just some very high-level takeaways from the data here. From nineteen-ninety to 2023, we more than doubled our population. It's a hundred-and-seven percent growth. We added over a hundred-and-eight-thousand people over that period of time. We also grew our FTEs, but we didn't grow them at the same rate. They grew five-hundred-and-twenty-two or sixty-two percent over that same period of time. And obviously, that downward trend gold bar in the middle shows that we reduced the number of city employees per ten-thousand population steadily over that period of time from eighty-three to sixty-five, which represents about a twenty-two percent reduction. The other thing that I would add is, if you notice on the far right, the population at two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-and-sixty-five employees per ten-thousand population includes the recommended thirty positions. So we haven't changed our bar, if you will, at sixty-five per ten-thousand population. So how does that stack up? We always like to then share, how do we compare to some of the other peer cities across the region? I've shared this information in prior years as well. Our place really hasn't changed. We're on the lower end. We're on the lower end of the spectrum at the 65 per 10,000 population. So I think that's, I think a good comparison to just take a peek at. The other thing that we want to do is not only look back, we also want to look forward. And I draw your attention to the far right of this bar chart. And the reason that I want to do this is to kind of try to set the stage for what we're thinking and what we're responding to. We are a growing, very vibrant community. We believe that growth is going to continue going forward. But if I were to project out and say, okay, if we grow another 100,000 over the next 30 years, what does the math look like? If we play that backwards and say, if we're going to keep the 65 per 10,000 population bar to keep up with the growth in the City of Sioux Falls, we would need to add 590 employees over that 30 years or an average of 22 FTEs per year. So again, just a gauge to give you a sense of what we're looking at and trying to keep up with growth. Obviously, it's the employees that are delivering the programs and services for the City of Sioux Falls and it's important we're keeping that in mind. We also know that some years it's just not that formulaic. Some years you're going to grow by more, some it's going to be by less, but also keep in mind that if your growth occurs on a faster basis than we've anticipated there, that crunches that period of time and indicates how important it is to try to keep up with that growth. And again, with a focus on being that employer of choice, workload capacity is a significant issue, which we're very sensitive to. It is an issue that we hear from our employees. Probably the two biggest issues we hear from them is the inflation piece and it's the capacity piece. So again, here are the 30 positions that have been recommended in the 2023 budget. The cost for the 30 positions is about 2.7 million dollars. Again, 25 of those are in the general fund. So the general fund implication is 2.2 million and 500,000 to the enterprise funds. I also thought it would be interesting to take a look at a period of time since 2018 through 2023 and get a count of the number of new FTEs over that period of time. And we've added 120, again, assuming the 30 in this recommendation for purposes of this calculation. 120 new FTEs, that averages 20 employees per year since 2018. Again, thinking back to what I just talked about in terms of that future projection, that's pretty close. Again, we're a growing community and the other thing I want to mention is kind of three key points as it relates to that issue. 30 new employees is obviously not a small number, but it's reflective of growth. But to put that in a little bit of perspective, we're a very large employer in the City of Sioux Falls. We're probably one of the top 15 largest employers in the region. We have 1,330 full-time employees today. Adding 30 more employees represents a 2.25% increase. And from a cost standpoint, again, I'm not trying to minimize this, I'm just trying to put it in context. The additional 2.7 million dollars to the budget represents less than half of 1% or 0.417%. So I just want to provide some context in terms of who we are in the City of Sioux Falls. We're obviously a very large employer with a lot of important responsibilities for essential programs and services throughout the city. I also wanted to kind of illustrate graphically, you know, where are those positions going? How are we investing our human capital across the City of Sioux Falls? And I've got to thank Amber Gibson from the finance department for figuring this out because I never knew to figure out how to fly these graphs in. So thank you, Amber. 41% of all of our employees are in either public safety and police and/or fire. Okay? That quick breakdown, if you're interested, 228 for fire, 326 for police. We then bring in what I refer to as kind of some infrastructure-type areas dealing with highways and streets and enterprise that brings in another 25% or brings us up to 66% of our employees in those respective areas. Again, another 11% are Public Health Department and Urban and Economic Development, which is our development, our Planning and Development Services Department. And the next piece, Culture and Recreation, 10%. That brings us to 87% of all city employees. Culture and Recreation, as you know, that's our library and Parks and Recreation Department. And our last segment, kind of two additional components, 10% for the operations team. That's finance, HR, IT, and what we're referring to as general administration here, that'd be the mayor, council and attorney's office. So that's where your human capital breaks down in this scenario, the 1,360 employees. That's what they're serving. That's why this is so important for us to continue to do that and do it effectively and again, continue to be that employer of choice. I have provided the council and this information is also available for the public as well, a summary of each of those respective positions, includes their job title, how they're funded, and just at least a summary. I know the vast majority of them, I think about 70% are existing job descriptions, but another 30% may be some new positions. So you at least have that information on hand. So with that, that concludes the kind of the large look at the personnel side of the equation. I looked at the agenda and my human resources budget didn't follow this, but can I just continue to move forward with the HR budget while I'm going well? I got the okay back there. How about the chair? You're okay with going?
Well, that'd be okay with me if you jump in front of your peers and I think that'd be good. So let's get questions on the general HR overview before he goes into his specific department. Any questions, council? Council member?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. So like the 30-some positions and 2.7 million in payroll being added this year, how does that compare with last year, the year before, that type of thing? Is it typical for the last couple of budget seasons?
I can tell you that in 2022, simply that we added 23 positions. I don't actually have the dollar figure, but it's something I can provide very easily after the fact.
Okay. And turnover rates up a bit doesn't look alarming, but I mean, overall, it's generally, of course, as it has been for the last year or two with the competition out there in the market. I mean, is it still? Is that why we're losing a little bit more? Is it still challenging out there to get and keep good employees? Are we holding our own or?
We're struggling in certain segments, just like everybody else. I would say that we've had probably more challenges with like nurses, LPNs, civil engineers, animal control. I'll even throw my department in that equation. We just recently went off the market to hire a risk manager and it just wasn't as fruitful as we've seen in the past. Again, I think that's why it's so significant that we make these investments into our teams. The way that we've been doing it, I think we're on a very good path. We've got a good strategy in place, keeping up with growth, keeping our part-time employees' compensation on that path. We've had some huge success there. These are issues that I do believe we will overcome with the strategies that we are in fact following. But as we're doing that, we're going to feel a little bit of this. And I would agree with what you said. Yeah, it's there, it's higher than usual. I wouldn't call it alarming, but it's worth paying attention to. We're not going to ignore it and we'll continue to do those right things so that we are striving to be that employer of choice in the region.
Yeah, it looked like it held pretty steady the last couple of years before and then last year was even down a little bit. So now it's up and again, not an alarming number, just kind of curious what that, what was entailed in there. So I appreciate the explanation.
Other questions? Councilor Starr?
Yep. Sorry, I didn't catch you before you flipped back. Do you have a chart or a forecast of when people, how many people we will be retiring over the next several years? Because that is a big jump between without retirements and the turnover rate just on
I do.
I knew you would.
And that's something obviously we're very in tune to and what I'm looking at and pulled out is kind of the number of retirements that are eligible for 22 alone. And then we've also looked forward from 2022 to 2027 and did a six-year look and on a percentage basis, kind of where everybody fell. And I'll just share just real quickly the 2022 numbers. Right now, we have 86 employees that are eligible for retirement, about 6.5%. So and I've shared all this information with the department so they're all aware, not only what's currently available, but they're also aware in the next five years where their retirements are going to be happening, both in their hourly ranks and in their management ranks. So they have a very good idea. So from a succession standpoint, we're ready for that. We've done a fair amount of succession planning over the last few years and had those discussions in the departments. I think they know where this is happening. The data is there. So yes, we're well aware where that activity is happening.
So building on that, with hiring 30 new this year, 20 each year moving forward, is that where the talent acquisition coordinator position really kind of jumps into that? Is that where the need is at and is one really?
It is. When we're looking at some of those growth and I'll share some of those statistics that helped us justify that position in just a couple of minutes. I've got like three slides, it won't take long to the HR budget, but I'll address that issue.
I always jump ahead, it's part of my thing, so I'm good.
Councilor Neitzer?
Well, I do have to admit, 30 is kind of an eye-popping number. I mean, I've been around at least long enough to see years where we had virtually maybe zero or just a few. So I guess I would be curious, I think you mentioned 20 a year since 2018? Is that what you said? Employees average?
Average, yes, since 2018, we've averaged 20 per year, looking at all the numbers, I get just taking an average.
Okay, well, so I started in 2016. What would be interesting would be, I wouldn't mind seeing back if you have, go back a couple of mayors, you know, like under, you know, Munson and Huthur. You know, are we, are we growing incredibly fast under the particular tenure or are we catching up to like what was pent-up demand? I mean, everyone has different, you know, I mean, so.
Counselor, that's a great question. I think this chart answers a little bit and the answer is yes, we have all that information. I don't have it right in front of me. Other than to look at this chart and say, I mean, if you were to look at this chart, I would look at 2010 to 2020, that 10-year period right there where we had 74 employees per 10,000 population in 2010 and in 2020 it dropped down to 65. That's an interesting trend period as you look at this chart. You know, we're using a benchmark of 65 because, I mean, is that the right number? I mean, I can't sit here and tell you absolutely that's the perfect number, but it is a number that I believe is very reflective of keeping up with growth as we're moving forward. And when we compare that with our peers, that seems to be informative. We're actually a little bit on the low end, but it's got to be a range. And I would argue that, well, clearly, we have been decreasing the number of city employees per 10,000 population for a very long period of time and only recently have we started to flatten that out a little bit when you look at the data. And I believe this is more reflective of where we need to be going forward. I just don't see that continuing to go that, that kind of a trend and keeping up with a growing community that we know that we are.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'll be looking at each position on the merits and looking at it, but it was just a big number, so it gave me a little bit of pause. The wage study, in 2023, you made a reference to, you're budgeting for the cost of the wage study? Is that what you're, what's built into the budget or?
Yes, we have, there's, we have, we have an extra, and again.
Are you going to get to that? Okay, well, then I won't let you, okay, we'll wait on that. Well, as far as the actual wage study goes, the findings from the wage study, I take it would be, you would get it done in early '23 so that you can get it before the budget cycle and you would build any increases that would be effective on January of 2024?
Yeah, the timeline is this, the study will be completed at the end of this year. So we'll have the data at the end of this year. We wanted the data to inform us, not only for development of the budget the following year, but also as we go into negotiations in 2023, that the timing was such, we knew what we were dealing with and what we were confronted with. So that's why the timing is what it is.
And then finally, so if you, and I don't know what the breakdown is and we'll find out. So this list of FTEs, are some potentially civil service and some appointive or is that, or is these numbers only civil service?
These, all 30 positions are civil service positions. 25 of them would be funded in the general fund, five of them are funded by the enterprise fund and all that breakout is on the sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Carris?
Thank you for the information and appreciate the approach with data and the compensation study. And you mentioned two things that you hear consistently from employees, inflation and capacity. Do you have data to show us where there is a capacity issue? For example, people reviewing building permits, it'd be pretty easy to look at data. They're trying to go through X number of applications and they just don't have the capacity. Do you have data to show that we have capacity issues for these positions that we're adding?
Yeah, and I think those are great questions, counselor. And I think as you have directors come up and talk about their budgets, I think you were going to hear that data. I have some of that data with respect to myself. What I'm sharing is when I say employees are concerned about inflation and they're concerned about capacity, some of that's anecdotal, some of that's based on some survey data that I looked at that was recently conducted by Mission Square, which is formerly ICMA RC. They did a survey of some employees in a post-COVID environment that talked about their concerns going forward. And even in those surveys, and I'd be happy to share it with you, they talked about a number of different things and those were also the top two items from their survey of state and city employees there as well. But I think you'll hear each of the departments talk about some of the data behind what it is they're dealing with. But you're spot on in that, yes, with this growth comes, you know, more building permits. All of that's tied together and why you're seeing, what you're seeing in terms of these rising numbers. And why, again, I didn't want to minimize the 30, that's not my point, but I did want to try to contextualize it a little bit, that we are a very large employer and what we do, we do through our employees.
Other questions? Councilor Starr?
Well, I think more of a comment, as we start looking at FTEs and FTEs per 10,000, I think we as a city have made a policy decision that we want to bring a lot of our services in-house. We've seen it with adding electricians, adding a couple of years back with adding the cleaning crews and making them employees and taking part-time people and making them full-time. And that, from what I can tell, has been wildly successful in adding those folks inside. So if we can call our own electrician or our own carpenter to get something done, we're not at the whim of the market or we can decide what projects are more important than other ones. So as we look at that, we could play the game and I'm willing to bet that if you looked at Omaha's budget, their contracted services are considerably higher than what ours are being at 59 employees per 10,000. Because it's easy and you see, you see state government do it a lot where one administration will come in and they're like, you know, we're having a hiring freeze, but contracted services go through the roof. And then you go around, then it comes back, the next administration comes in and says, hey, we're spending way too much money on contracted services. It would be less expensive and more convenient to bring those in-house. And I think we've done a good job as a city sticking to the plan of moving those FTEs in-house so that we have control over their day and their time and especially as we see the marketplace for service providers so short that being able to do that in-house. So again, I'm concerned, but we'll work our way through it and, but at the same time, I'd rather see us do, provide those services to the community with our own employees.
Other counselors? I'll have one question before you jump into your HR department. Some departments have very large overtime budgets and other departments, of course, have zero. So is there any kind of metrics or how do you judge when it's time to hire a full-time employee versus continuously paying out overtime? I mean, look at fire and police and those numbers are astronomical for their overtime. Where's that break? How do you judge that?
You're right, and I think there's, there's staffing issues that obviously come into play when you kind of get behind the curve in terms of recruiting classes and when people come on board. We don't have a magic formula. In fact, I don't have actual overtime dollars in front of me here today to say that's what it is. Obviously, that is a key consideration that you don't want to continue to run high overtime if that can be resolved and alleviated, actually be more efficient by bringing employees on. But you do see some of those numbers that maybe more, more people are separated than anticipated in a given year and you start playing catch-up. And you know how that works in fire service. and you start playing catch-up. And you know how that works in fire service. You've got certain staff that have got to be on in particular shift, and you do what you've got to do to cover your operational needs. And if that means overtime, you do it. And we're on a pretty good schedule. And again, that all ties back into this kind of this employer and choice concept, making sure we're getting those investments correctly and we're doing the right things so that there isn't any hurdles when we give out to hire those folks. I mean, you've heard some of the stories that relates to the police officers, not as significant in fire, and you don't want to get there. But I don't have a barometer to say, well, immediately when you hit X percentage of overtime, that we've got to be looking at that. That's something that each of the respective departments are looking at on a regular basis as they're managing their budgets and making their case for FTEs going forward. But I don't have a formula that says, the minute you hit X, that discussion should be had. I don't know if that answers your question or not, counselor.
Well, my concern is I have been employed by the city when the mandate has come down, no more overtime because of the budget, the budget had cratered, the recession had hit, which actually I believe we're in. So as we're allocating millions and millions of dollars for overtime, I don't want to see those people short-staffed at any point. And I'll address them with their specific departments, which you have a zero in overtime. So let's get right into your HR department.
Thank you. And I just have a few slides. Again, our purpose and our focus in HR is to ensure that we're pursuing that path of being an employer of choice. It is obviously vitally important to us to make sure we have the ability to bring people onboard, that we can attract them, that we can retain them, that we can create a culture that they can thrive in, and that we're supporting leadership. Just by the sheer math of it all, with seventeen FTEs, it would be an increase of one. That's thirty-five thousand hours that our department can put into supporting those efforts. It's why it's led to an ask for us to seek another talent acquisition coordinator. I will share some of the data from, again, from 2018 to 2021. We saw a forty-four percent increase in the number of vacancies, or ninety-one to one hundred and thirty-one. We saw a fifty-five percent increase in the number of interviews. We went from eight fifty-one to one thousand three hundred and sixteen. A forty-one percent increase in the number of new hires, a hundred to a hundred and forty-one, and a thirty-eight percent increase in separations. And that's just, that volume, and we just can't get behind, if you will, in this process. And when you think about the civil service process that we go through, that's our job is to make sure we're meeting the department's needs when they have their vacancies and that we can adequately fill them. So we want to be prepared for that. Those increases are there. The teams are feeling it. Again, we don't want to fall behind. We want to stay ahead of it. So that is the reason for our ask for an FTE for 2023. Some of the major operating budget impacts or highlights, if you will, for the HR budget, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase for our team. I can break that down real easy for you. Sixty-eight percent of that is for the FTE that I just mentioned for the talent acquisition coordinator. It's about a hundred and twelve thousand, fifty-three thousand for normal wage and benefit increases. For the remaining team, a hundred thousand dollar increase to complete the study. Some of the study results will tail into next year. We may not use all of the hundred thousand dollars. But that's why you see the ask in the budget for the compensation and benefit study. And there's a twenty-two thousand dollar increase for occupational physicals. And quite frankly, that's just our ability to support and keep up with what's going on in the hiring arena for public safety for police and fire. That's as quick as I can be.
Questions, counselor?
Questions on the HR.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, the hundred thousand dollar increase for the comp study that will be done this year in 2022 and will trail into 2023, will that then be ongoing in your budget? Or will you be able to show us next year around this time that you'll decrease that hundred thousand dollars?
We will, we'll show a decrease coming out. Kind of the more magical question will be, how often or how frequent do we think we need to start doing these going forward? And what I would share with you is, I think it's going to be on a much more frequent basis than eight to ten years. So it's probably going to be closer to maybe three to five. Because we do, we do collect some information to inform us as we go into labor negotiations. But these comprehensive looks where you're taking a look at much more data and using an independent person to do it is just something I think we're gonna have to look at, particularly if there's not a correction in the environment. We all know how fast all employers are moving to seek talent. So, but we will do whatever we have to do, and we'll come to you with the support and request if we think we need it. But that's more of the kind of the timeline we're following right now.
Other questions? Counselor Neitz, sir?
Do you, for, this question applies to this new position and frankly, any new position. I don't necessarily need it right here and now, but do you have job descriptions written for these? Where one can see exactly?
Yes, I got a full job description. Like I said, if, on the sheet that I shared, if there's a Y next to the box, it means we have an existing job description. All job descriptions are available on the inside. You can go click and look at the full job description as opposed to just a summary.
What about the new proposed ones? Would those be available or?
Eventually, they will be. We at least wanted, at this point, provide a summary of what the title is, how it's funded, and what its job duties generally will be.
Okay, but the only reason I ask is for, it obviously, a job description is the absolute best way to see exactly what their expectations would be, and then pay classification potentially, so. I don't know if you set that this early in the process or not.
Right. Now, we've made some, obviously, some estimates that may have to get reconciled once we have all that detail. And if there's, counselor, if there's more detail maybe you want than just the summary, I think each of the directors might be able to respond to that in a little more detail to help answer your question.
Okay, this particular position, what would you say your closest job title is? I mean, who, I'm not asking for the name, but who is wearing the hat of, is there somebody kind of doing this right now, or is this a complete gap or talent acquisition?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Talent acquisition coordinator. Is there somebody wearing, I'm not asking for a name of a person, but is there somebody that's doing some of that work, or is this a complete gap that you're not doing at all?
No, this is, this is capacity. This is adding, I've got, well, I can show the team members. This is Jane Hannah said's team. Jane's the talent manager.
Yeah, I figured it'd be her. Okay, yeah.
This is Jane's team, and I've got two other talent acquisition coordinators. This would be a third.
Okay, so this is, I mean, things we're doing now, like headhunting and all of that sort of stuff? I mean, it's just the volume of work?
Yes, it's responding to the demands and keeping up with the demands and the increases that we've seen in those statistics that I shared. Yes.
Okay, that clarifies that. The only reason I asked is because I was thinking, I thought we had talent acquisition. But, okay, so it's just a new team member. And then, could you, there's been some reorganization, and I always forget. Besides the core human resources function, what else lives under you? Risk management or what?
Yes, risk management. I've got compensation and benefits and the talent side. And you'll hear more in a little while. We also made some changes with respect to the communications team, and that now rests under the HR department as well.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, I guess first, an easy one, the increase for occupational physicals. Do our new employees use Falls Community Health as part of that? Or did they go out into the, how do we do that part of it?
Yeah, we contract with Sanford Occupational Medicine for all those services.
Perfect. Trying to, it's my annual question of this as part of the budget process. We continually hear our department heads ask for help to diversify their workforce. We saw it in the interview process for the new police chief. We hear the other ones. When are we gonna put an incentive together or a special program that looks at hiring diverse employees in the city? Because our numbers aren't getting better, and we do this every year. And I know you've suggested that I should come up with a plan for you, but, you know, if I had something better. But I, we're not doing it.
Well, counselor, what I would say to that is that's a constantly moving target. And yes, each year, we talk a little bit about this, and the numbers change with census changes. And we issue an affirmative action plan every year where we, in fact, we make those counts. We know where we are in each of those respective, I think there's seven or eight occupational categories, based on female representation, minority representation. So we know where we are. We develop goals. But I, and we make sure that the businesses and organizations that are representative of various groups receive all of the notices when we have an opportunity. We want them to apply. I think a lot of employers want to see more diverse candidates. We welcome them. I can't make them apply. They've got, you know, everybody has to compete for a position. And I'm with you. I'd love to be able to say, we're there in all these categories. We're not, but we are constantly looking at it. We're complying with our own internal policies, the federal policies on the affirmative action planning. We're doing all those things. We think we're doing a lot of the right things. But I haven't come up with a magic bullet yet that says, if you do this, you're gonna increase this, and you're gonna achieve your representation for all these respective categories. And that's why I say I'm wide open to ideas and suggestions, because we are trying and doing what we can and trying all avenues, and we're open to all considerations to be more representative.
So you say we know where we're at. Would you say we're not where we need to be? I mean, because you used the example that, you know, the population is six percent Native American. I'm just making up a number. So then we're at six percent, so that's good enough. Or are we not there and we need to make a better effort at finding a better way to?
I could dig through it, and I'd be happy to share this information as a follow-up.
You have?
So I can show you this. Yes, I've got the statistics that say, okay, the available workforce for females and minorities in our census status in Sioux Falls is X. Where does our population sit in relation to that workforce? We know where that is, and if you're below that, you then develop goals and proposals to try to improve that category. And what happens is there'll be periods of time where you have achieved it. There'll be periods of time where you have not achieved that. But we know what it is. And that's always the first, that's the first issue, right? You gotta know where you are. You can't do any better if you don't know where you are. So we measure it every year.
So I guess I'm back to the first question. Are we where we need to be?
In respect to all of those categories, the answer to that would be no. In some categories, we are, and again, I don't want to fumble through a sixty-page affirmative action report to get it, but I will share that with you, and it's, that information is readily available.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, I would just like to follow up, and if you could supply to all the counselors the diversity of our city workforce that we employ and comparatively to the community, I think we'd all appreciate that.
Be happy to.
Really good. My second question is, do the specific departments look for talent? If I'm the police department, do they have people assigned to the recruitment of police officers? And how do they, if they do, how do they work with you in HR?
Yes, and the police department, they have a team that is, that is working with our talent acquisition coordinators, with Jane on the talent management team. It is a collective effort. It's a collective team that looks at all those opportunities. We help deliver and execute on some of the items that they're pursuing, where they want to advertise, how they want to go about doing it, is a collective effort. Same thing with the fire department as well.
Okay. I would just like to personally thank you and your staff for all the help that you've given the council as, throughout the years, as part-time people, we have to supervise at times. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the mayor's office, and I would advise the council members not to hold it against HR and our contest judging that he skipped in line in front of other people. So we'll shoot right into the mayor's office.
Thank you so much, Erica Beck. We have one slide to present to you today for the mayor's office budget. It's page seventeen of your budget book, if you'd like to follow along. Ultimately, the mayor's office budget is budget-neutral year-over-year, due essentially to the shifting of a position as Director O'Toole referenced from the mayor's office to communications. And that is Ally Hartzler, who you'll be hearing from momentarily with regard to the presentation on the communications department. Ultimately, Ally served as our culture officer and is now serving as our communications and culture officer. And she's taking on that work based upon her background and skillset, which is in communications and specifically digital communications. And so we're really excited to have her part of our team and embracing this opportunity moving forward. She's still going to be very connected to the mayor's office. We obviously work very closely with Ally in regards to communications. And ultimately, she will be part of our director's team, our executive team moving forward. She'll be at those meetings so that she has a really good viewpoint on what's happening across the organization. And that then translates into exceptional communications, not only internally, but for the residents in our community as well. And that's ultimately, I think, something that you'll hear from her, if not today, in the future, because she's very passionate about engaging our community. In addition to that, we are proposing to add one new FTE that essentially would be a team member on our staff for the remainder of Mayor Tenhaiken's term. Bill stated that the positions ultimately entirely would be civil service positions. Mayor's office positions are not civil service. They're appointed positions. And this would be no different in this situation. And I say for the remainder of the term, because ultimately, a new mayor coming onboard, it's unlikely perhaps that they would continue to move forward with this role. So ultimately, we would, if we have the opportunity to move forward with hiring this individual, make sure that our marketing efforts to find the right person, they understood that the position is appointed, and they essentially have a full three years to do good things with the city, and then at that time, they may have to move on. In addition to that, I'll just make a few comments about that position. I think Director O'Toole has it summarized real nicely on that sheet for all of you. Ultimately, they would be responsible for proactive policy research. So there are often times where we have opportunities to advance policy work to all of you for consideration, and we just don't have the team members onboard to do some of that proactive policy research. The best example I can give you just recently that you'll all be very familiar with is medical cannabis. A number of us sat on a group, a committee-focused task force, and essentially put together recommendations for all of you to consider for that ordinance. And the attorney's office obviously helped us considerably as well in drafting the actual ordinance. But I don't necessarily feel like we had the time devoted that we needed to to do the research that we could have into what other jurisdictions even were doing across the country. And so that's a really great example of the way that we would utilize this position in our office. In addition to that, and I think just as important is, last year was a great example of the number of items at the state legislature that were under review that directly impacted the city of Sioux Falls in one way, shape, or form, and specifically financially. And it was really difficult for our office to track all of that work. And yes, we have a great partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and Deborah Owen certainly assists us with that. But ultimately, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and I know many of you understand what goes into making sure that the legislators have the information that they need to make good decisions in their committee meetings and such. And this person would be playing an integral role with our team and across the organization to make sure that we get the information in the hands of the right people. And then, in addition to that, I also noted, and you'll see it reflected in the actual title of the position, but project management, special project management. There are a lot of really good things happening in this community, and a lot of things happening that require leadership skills from our mayor. And they don't necessarily touch departments. And I'll give you another really great example of that. Childcare has been a topic across this community for months, years, if I may. And ultimately, the mayor's been leading a group of people called the childcare, they're calling themselves the Childcare Collaborative in an effort to put money together, monies together, to work on actual solutions regarding this challenge in our community. And ultimately, this type of position would assist him with those efforts. He gets pulled into a lot of things, a lot of different areas of community leadership that require that kind of project management. And that's ultimately another reason that we're requesting this position. I don't have data, Counselor Neitz, to back that up other than anecdotally being able to tell you that we have a lot moving forward, a lot of opportunities in the next three and a half years, and we want to make sure that we're able to bring those forward for consideration at one point or another. And additionally, just of- And additionally, just of note, and you'll see this on the screen as well, we have support for the coordination of the Sioux 52 mentorship program in our budget. And that, again, is a partnership. If you remember correctly, I sent an email in May of this year when we had an agreement move forward on the consent agenda for approval to work in collaboration with the Helpline Center to coordinate efforts surrounding the Sioux 52 initiative. And that's a partnership between the city of Sioux Falls, Downtown Rotary, and the Helpline Center. Downtown Rotary also contributes financially to that agreement, ultimately ensuring that the Helpline Center has staff available to help coordinate mentorship efforts across the community, working with both businesses, nonprofits that have mentorship opportunities available, and then individuals seeking to connect with those opportunities. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have regarding the mayor's office budget. And then I'm going to transition into another area.
Mayor's Office Budget. Counsel. Counsel McCarris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Beck. Two questions. One is, this is going to sound negative and sound like I'm in opposition, but it's not. Is the mayor's office the appropriate place for Sioux 52 to live? It feels a little kind of pet project-ish. We all know the mayor is very passionate about this, and I think we appreciate his leadership in the community. I think one danger is obviously mayor changes. Next mayor comes in, they see an opportunity to use $40,000 for Pets RS on 41st Street instead, or whatever it might, whatever it might be. Is there a more appropriate place that this would get embedded within the organization, and so that has life ongoing?
Great question. Thank you for asking that. My response would be at long-term, yes. I think the beauty of this living in the mayor's office today is that the position or the agreement essentially with the Helpline Center needs to prove itself, right? We need to be able to showcase to the community and to the council and ultimately to ourselves that we're getting the results that we need from this agreement. And so ultimately, in the next year, two years, if it is successful and we can showcase that we're making headway in terms of providing mentorship opportunities and connecting people with those opportunities, then I think we could look at a different spot for it to live ultimately within the organization.
Thank you. My final question is, and this might be inappropriate, Mr. Chairman, so just kick me out if it is. I appreciate the example you gave on the project manager research position, and specifically, you talked about the legislative work and working on policy. Obviously, the mayor's office writes policy and submits it. The council writes policy and seeks to pass it. We've got staff that works for us on policy. Is there an opportunity maybe to strengthen that relationship specifically when we're talking about peer of the staff that we have regarding policy? I just want to make sure we're not duplicating efforts of the mayor's got a policy person now working in peer, we've got a policy working person in peer. I just want to make sure we're not duplicating that effort and trying to do it together.
Another great question. I think there's always opportunities to strengthen the relationship, absolutely. I also think in some situations, the mayor's asks for opinions on different types of bills at the legislature that we're not even aware of, quite frankly, because maybe they don't have a direct connection to the city or city budget. And ultimately, that's one area that we would potentially utilize this person for that I don't think is maybe redundant to what you guys are doing.
Other questions? Counsel Naitzer.
Are you envisioning one of the roles of this position would be as a lobbyist?
No.
Okay. So I mean, keeping abreast of what's going on in peer, but not actively necessarily being, would we be counting on our representatives and other organizations to do that?
Correct. This position would not be as a lobbyist. We have a lot of work behind the scenes that we need to focus on, and that's where this position would be focused.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying that this is an appointive position. Because I mean, when I read the three and a half-year role, I was, you know, if it's civil service, I don't know how you can say it's three and a half years. But yeah, so, and any, the next future mayor's perfectly will have the latitude to keep it, to redo their vision, whatever. So very good. Thanks.
Counsel Starr.
Yes, thank you. To follow up a little bit on the lobbyist part of it, are we at that point where we need a lobbyist? The school district has a lobbyist that's separate from their groups. They've done things through the years. I think we're missing things that are happening in peer, not only in peer, but in Washington to track that. And is that something we can do internally with the staff we have? Or is that, are we at that point where we need to make that next step?
Another great question. Thank you. We've actually had some conversations about this in the past. And ultimately, what was recommended to us was that we look specifically at areas that need attention to and then hire industry experts, lobbyists, specifically that focus on those areas. A great example of that is housing. So just having a generalized lobbyist on staff without the knowledge of the housing industry or the players in the market and those types of key ingredients, so to speak, would be a challenge. And so what was recommended to us is that we consider partnering with different entities outside of having an internal lobbyist to do that work for us and with us if necessary.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, I have a question, and probably not going to get another great question coming from, in 2021, in professional services, we budgeted a large amount, and you only spent $4,000. Then the '22 budget, you came back at 53. Now '23 budget, you're back at $53,000. Could you go into a little bit more detail about professional services in the mayor's office? And if you get a new employee, could we anticipate that the professional services expenditure would be considerably less?
Good question. Great, I'm not sure, but good. Good for sure. You know, I don't remember for certain why we had that professional budget, services budget initially, but the way we utilized it, I think it was 2019, was to bring on a consultant that helped us implement a system called traction. And we've not really talked about it in this arena necessarily, but traction is an internal accountability system that we utilize across the organization, and especially amongst the directors teams, to essentially align all of our strategies moving forward and make sure that those are filtered throughout the organization effectively. And we brought on an individual, his name was Tom Morgan, who served as a consultant for us to help us implement that system. I think in 2020, there was a partial contract still with him, and then in 2021, we didn't utilize that budget. We also had that budget to some degree in our office because we were anticipating needing to bring on a consultant for the Event Center Campus Master Plan. And due to COVID, we didn't move forward with that. And so I can't necessarily tell you that the professional services budget is going to decrease drastically because of this new position, because they're really not tied. But what I would also tell you is we don't have plans specifically for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. You're certainly in the top four for today.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That was my goal, top four.
Now you're on to communications.
Actually, I'm on to operations team. I apologize. This might be a little out of order.
It's okay.
So this is new to your budget this year. And this slide referencing the operations team is on page 20 of your budget book. And it's devoted to talking about our operations team. And I think Director O'Toole referenced this as well, but the operations team is compiled of those departments that you see on the slide, communications, finance and facilities, human resources, and innovation and technology. These team members provide the foundation for growth within our organization and support our externally facing departments in their service to businesses and residents in our community. I wanted to mention this operations team because ultimately, this is probably the first year, year and a half that we've been referencing this team internally. And I think it's important for all of you to know, if you hear this term, who it is that we're talking about, and ultimately, what the role is that they play in the organization. If you think about it, in many private sector businesses or even nonprofits, there's typically an operations team, right? And it's made up of all these centrally organized services that help the organization grow and meet the needs of whatever the organization's service focus is. And this team is no different in that sense. And I can't stress to you enough how great they have been in trying out a new model, essentially internally, where they are all meeting as leadership across these four areas together on a monthly basis. And they're talking about challenges that our departments, our externally facing departments are having collectively, and they're coming up with solutions collectively. And it's creating more efficient service for the community as a result. And so I just wanted to point this out because ultimately, you don't always get a behind-the-scenes view in terms of what we're doing organizationally. I think it's important for you to know this. Next is innovation and technology. And I am going to transition this ultimately to Rick Wheelburg, who's our chief technology officer. But I just wanted to point out that innovation and technology is comprised of both technology and civic analytics. And both Rick and Lori Soul, who you probably all know, are in the audience today. And so any questions you ultimately have, the three of us will be happy to respond to. I think you all know that I'm currently serving as the interim director for this department. And it's been fantastic to get to know the employees in this department to a greater degree than what I have had the opportunity to do so prior. And the reason I want to point that out is because ultimately, both Lori and Rick's team are, they're very behind the scenes, right? They're the group of people that ensure that we have access to Parcel Finder, Counselor Naitzer, right? They ensure that we have access to secure systems to use for our email and our storage and so forth. And they just provide critical services that oftentimes go unnoticed. And so I'm going to transition it over to Rick, and he's going to talk about the budget, and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Richard Wheelburg, Chief Technology Officer for the city of Sioux Falls. I am very pleased to be before you today and present the Innovation and Technology proposed budget. Like some of my colleagues, I'll start with our purpose and our focus. If you categorize those in three different areas, I would start off by saying we protect the city against cyber threats. There's a lot of spicy bad actors out there, and we are there to stop them. And we target that by proactively partnering with not only community partners, but national partners, and providing comprehensive security solutions that I know we covered at least part of that off in executive session. The second part is really driving more efficiencies. And part of my role as the CTO here at the city is to start to drive that more across all of the departments and bring all of that data back together for the benefit of the citizens of Sioux Falls. We do our best to try to continually automate the processes and optimize all of the applications that we use, as well as standardize. So we look for cost savings wherever possible in the interest of the city. And finally, Lori and I work really closely on the data portion of this. So the more we're able to bring together all the separate data from all the different departments, analyze that data, we're able to get to a point where we can hopefully make better decisions based upon data in the future. And a lot of this new data science and a lot of these new methodologies and stuff are just evolving in the city now today. So get to talk a little bit about our people. We're very fortunate that we have a very strong team of technology professionals. And, you know, like Erica said, they don't get a lot of credit day to day. They definitely get heard from when something doesn't go right. So I would put forward that we have a very strong team. There's a graphic kind of showing all the different areas of my team and Lori's team. The new positions that we are putting forward are specifically a network administrator, an IT systems analyst, and a technology project manager. Very needed positions, and we definitely can go into more detail if you'd like. Moving to the next slide, just the high level for our budget, which is on page 24 of the budget book. I think most of you know that the vast majority of our budget is, well, roughly 80% of it is wages and benefits. And that would be shown here in the first bullet item. So $645,000 is going to be the increase for just normal wages and benefits, including the three new FTEs and an additional part-time person. The second bullet is $43,000 related to the investment in our team to address gaps in certification and training. There's two things I'd probably say about this. One is when you get into technical-type positions, one of the big things for these guys, and this goes directly to employee retention, is they can further their skills, and they can add to their resume by achieving these certifications. So that's one category. The second part of it would be, we need to keep up and keep pace with the technologies that we're utilizing here in the city. And instead of always going out to that, we know we try to address that internally. One of the examples I would use would be VMware. We do a lot with VMware, and I know at least two or three of those certifications were specifically in VMware. The last bullet item is $14,000 addressing the uncertainty in the economy, and it's, you know, due to supplies, materials, and utilities. A couple additional bullet points for you there. $7,000 of that is just the increased costs year over year in software maintenance. And $6,500 of it is the increased cost in network, internet, and network services. And with that, I appreciate you listening, and I am willing to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? Counsel Naitzer.
Well, I guess the only thing I would say, since it was mentioned and she's here, is I would give civic analytics a shout-out, the incredible work they do. I was just in there yesterday, and they've been working on two or three great things for me. And it's amazing what they can do. So I would support a wage increase across the board.
Appreciate that, Counselor.
But they really do great things internally, externally, and I know they've even been nationally recognized for some of their work. So it's really, really great stuff.
Recently as well, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
Counsel Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it is a talented department. Thanks for the presentation. Is the increase in the wages and benefits, the number we're talking, like the $645 and the three new full-time employees and that, is that pretty standard? Has that been about average the last year or two?
I can't speak to the past couple of years because I've been in my role about a year and a half. I'm sure somebody in finance could help me with that. But I could tell you that, given the total number of employees that we have, I think it's very much on par. And I can speak to that, just in my knowledge, being here, just short of two years. But if you'd like to go back further than that, I can work on that with finance.
It didn't seem like a real crazy number. Just curious if that was on par with what we've seen in the last whatever. So get something with it, great. But thank you.
Counsel Jensen.
Thank you, Chair. One of the questions that I have, and thank you for bringing the city council staff and our departments along with you on this journey of technology. We really appreciate that, and you making it a priority of your department to bring us along. So as we transition into like the Office 365 and we make advances like that, is that shown, where's that kind of shown in the budget? And is that more expensive than our current system, but keeps us safer from a threat level? How does that kind of, what is your general thought process around that?
So a lot of that is going to be paid out of the Technology Revolving Fund, and that's not something I speak to because it's an internal fund. And I know that, I believe, it's like page 69 or 70, it's in your budget book, I know that. And that's allocated out across all of the different departments. So in total, I think that it's going to be very much on par, but it's going to give us a lot of additional savings, not only in ability to collaborate, but in the security world.
Thank you. That's it.
Other questions? Comments? I'd just make one comment on your additional employees. It's a little troubling to me for a department to be asking for additional employees without a department head. That could totally reshape the structure going forward and whenever they're brought on board. So I'm just a little concerned about that going forward. And I'd really have no problem giving you, I mean, voting for three new employees if you could just get it so I only ever had one password, and I never had to change. Because this change in your password all the time, it's confusing. It's a confusing thing.
Counselor, I will work with you on that offline.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Ally Hartzler, Communications and Culture Officer. I want to start with just a super quick little story for you. So this week at work, one of my colleagues who has lived in the So this week at work, one of my colleagues who has lived in the city of Sioux Falls for over 20 years, shared with me that she did not know about the existence of Tuthill. Okay? And here's why I'm telling you that. This is such a small example of how important communications are to share about how great the resources and services we offer here at the city. So that is why this team is so critical to serving the community. And I'm excited to share our recommended budget with you here today. So the communications team's purpose is to engage, inform, and connect our community to our city resources and services. Whether that's printing out posters for library storybook time or read updating the police department recruitment page on the website or weekly street construction updates. Our team is behind the scenes helping to bring to life all this excellent work that's happening across the city. And the way we do that is sort of through these three focused areas. So we have a team that helps develop our strategy and sort of the why and what we need to communicate. We have a part of our team dedicated to digital and video. So that's really about where do we need to be sending these messages? We know our residents are increasingly online. They love to watch video types of content. So how do we deliver our information to that, them in that format? And last but not least is production. And that's how do these things actually come to life? So we have a whole team of print, mail, graphic designers, and editors who are really just making all of this come together. The communication team is made up of 21 professionals. And in addition to supporting key initiatives through strategic communication, a big part of our job is providing accurate, helpful, and easy to find information. Probably the best example of this is siouffalls.org. So just last year, we had over a million people, a million visits to that website. So it's an incredibly powerful tool for us when we're communicating with our community. Another important part of our job is emergency incident response. So over the past four years, we have had seven emergency responses activated. And that's a huge lift for our team. That it's really critical from a communications perspective to be present and communicating with the public when an emergency like a storm happens. So that's a huge part of what we do. Community engagement is also very important. And not just telling our residents what we're doing, but trying to make it two-way whenever we can and asking them what they need and how we can better serve them. And that includes new residents. You heard the mayor talk about the 7,000 people who are projected to move to Sioux Falls. And we want to help educate them on what the city can do to help make living here the best experience it can be. And last but not least, we do a lot to support the daily business operations of the city. So we completed 4,500 communications requests last year. We're on target to well surpass that this year. So that's just the daily grind of getting work done at the city. We are requesting a total budget of 3.2 million for 2023. 169,000 of that is for normal wage and benefit shift in personnel. And then we have a small increase for supplies and utilities. And with those few short and sweet slides, I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? Counsel Bronco.
I think this function is absolutely vital. And I think the story that you told about your neighbor and not being aware of that beautiful park is, you know, revelatory, but also not really atypical. There's so many wonderful things that the city and community is doing and offering. And so many times when I think all of us talk to our constituents, they're, they're not necessarily aware of all the opportunities that are available. So we've got to make that linkage. And I love that not only are you doing the outreach, but the in-reach of trying to make it a two-way street. So I just want to give you some kudos on that, but also ask if there's any way that the city council can help other than we're going to obviously give due diligence and consideration to budget. But just mechanically, if we can be a part of that process, help our citizens and residents understand all the opportunities available to them.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually have a handful of community engagement initiatives happening right now. So I'll use the Falls Park Master Plan as an example. We're working on sort of a consolidated communications of how can we package things all together to make it easier for residents to engage with. And I think when you're engaging with your constituents, that's a huge, powerful way that you can support us is just getting that out there because we, we don't always reach the people, but you have a different audience. So that's a huge support for us.
Lovely to give you some, and making it easy, I think, is, is a key feature because we, we seem to live in a world now where if it's more than one or two or three keystrokes, it's just not going to happen. So facilitating that and making things easy to find, easy to do, easy to do and easy to connect with is a great direction to go forward.
Yes, people are used to Amazon, so there's a high bar.
Counsel Jensen.
Thank you, Counselor. One of the questions that I have, and we probably take it offline, but it's probably something you'd want to, you know, spread to the general public. Is there an easy way for me to go onto our website, the City of Sioux Falls, and sign up like I would sign up for an Amazon where, you know, new events come in, boom, you shoot a video out about the Tuthill House or you shoot a video out about Great Bear or, you know, new expansions that by, is there, is there a way or an easy way for me to subscribe to something like that?
It's a great question. We don't have a citywide email newsletter right now. We have like the Parks and Rec has a great one, Library has a great one. So you'll get updates that way, but definitely would love to explore in the future a consolidated, something like that. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Nightser.
So do you, okay, so when, when text messages get pushed, like mosquito spraying is happening tonight, some of that other stuff, does that funnel through you or are those individual departments managing that?
That's a great example of a tool where we're offering the strategy, but the actual day-to-day execution of that was within the department. So we might help consult on the tool or the messaging, but the actual like pushing of the button that hits send, that comes from the Health Department.
But do you know if they're using, procuring individual, you know, vendors and like Health is using this one and doing this?
Oh, sorry. We have one tool. It's called Everbridge. Yes. It's one tool.
All right.
Yep.
But it, obviously you can put whatever content you want in it. Obviously, so each department would come up with the content, but it's all funneling through the one tool?
That's correct, but it works like an email list. So it's not as though they're totally separate. So Health lists that they're sending mosquito information to as separate from transit.
Sure. And then underneath the, the other part, which is the Culture Officer umbrella, you'll have to remind me, there's a, a software that at least in the past, you've been using to gauge, and I believe it would live under, under you, which is each department and where you're, where you're getting the feedback from the departments to get kind of the scores of satisfaction. I mean, can you help me? What was that software called?
Yes, that's correct. It's our employee engagement software. It's called Picon.
Picon, thank you. I was wanting to say Pontonium, but that's like the transit deal, but.
Yes. There's a lot of names.
Yeah. So are, is that still being used and funded on an annual basis and finding good results? Just generally where, where's that at?
Yes, that's correct. We still utilize that tool. Our contract with them does expire at the end of this year. So we'll definitely be thinking about what next steps with them will look like. But it's a huge component to building and maintaining our culture is engaging our employees.
Communications, are they still going to be housed on third floor?
Yep. Yes, we're up on third floor of City Center.
Okay. And then, and just to be clear.
Have you seen our gigantic printer that we have?
It's been a while. I don't know if I've seen the gigantic.
It's impressive.
Okay, all right. I'm going to check it out. So, but so communications at it, you're now underneath Human Resources, just so I'm abundantly clear.
That's correct.
That all shifts under there.
Yes.
And then you mostly would ma, you're managing the, the content when it comes to things like the website and things like that. And then I, IT would handle kind of, you know, the nuts and bolts of making the servers run and stuff. But the content is what, I mean, social media and the websites, you're developing all the content.
Yep, that's correct. Yes.
So as a webmaster, for lack of a better term, and I know we've had some shifts, so I don't even know if we have a webmaster, but.
Yes, so we have a team that's focused on digital communication. So that includes the website, social, email, text messaging someday, whatever new thing comes after that. And thinking about what are the goals of our departments and how can we use those tools, tools to better support them in achieving those goals?
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, Counsel? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're on to our final G, Finance. We wrap it up with finance and a G under, under our agenda. G for great.
So I get to bookend the budget hearings today, which I appreciate. And if I can speak for 20 minutes, I can avoid any future questions or further questions at this point. But I'm going to try to avoid that because I don't have 20 minutes of content, which I know you will find hard to believe. As far as our overall budget, so the Finance Department, and I'm going to talk about core finance. We have other parts of our department related to facilities and public parking. And we will address those next week. So core finance, we have a budget about 3.8 million dollars. And like most of the sport departments, it's primarily all personnel at 93% of our total budget, 7% being other items. I think there's only really two areas we see proposed an increase for this year. I'll tick the first one off first, and that's just in the rentals. And that's just the technology fund flowing through with all the increases that are assessed back to each of those departments. So that's all related to technology increases. The other side of the equation is on the personnel side. And you can see here we have a $253,000 increase on the personnel side. So part of that is just the normal wage increases. So we have the benefit of having a part of our staff being very seasoned and having a long history of work with the city and body of work. And we rely upon their experiences over time. But we've had a number of additional new, younger people, people that are younger in their careers, added to our staff over the course of the last four years as well. And with that being earlier in their careers eligible for more step increases as part of that. And so you see that increasing a little bit here over time as well. We do also have two FTE requests coming forward. They're really both embedded FTE requests that are done in partnership with two different departments. One is with Public Works and one is with Health. And so we have a position very similar to this already. We have an accountant that is embedded with our Housing Division. So she reports to the Finance Department, works very closely with us, but lives within the Housing Department in terms of where they office at. And the importance of that is the collaboration that they need. Housing is very grant, very federal grant reliant. There is a lot of compliance and a lot of challenging things that you're dealing with when you're dealing with housing and development accounting that is, that is just very different and you have to be close to the staff. And so that has been a model that has worked very well for us. The two additional FTEs requested would be of a similar nature with, with slightly different types of scope of work of what they would be accomplishing. And the areas that we've looked at, it was, you know, you talked a little bit earlier during Director O'Toole's present, presentation about how many FTEs we add and so forth. And, you know, thinking about that a little bit, sometimes as, as a public body, and I would assure you this is the case, we have done what we can to restrain FTE growth. And that means, you know, we take opportunities to add technology. We contract where it's efficient or effective use of resources. And we are always very cognizant of adding an FTE because we know that lives long within the city, right? But there are points in time where that's, you have kind of that stress point where you can't avoid that growth that exists. And there's only so far you can go. So I, I'm going to reference Director Cotter, who always likes to say, go as lean as you can for as long as you can. And we do that as a city, I think, in very good terms on a system-wide basis. But there are times where that growth comes in and you just hit that where you have to hit that next level. And that's, that's the point where we're at here with the city. When we look at a finance position or on a finance side of things, we see certain stress points and some that we have, haven't necessarily addressed in the past. And these two positions are meant to address two stress points that we've seen and recognized within finance. And they've existed for several years and it's time for us to address them. The first one is within Health. And it relates to, number one, we have a growing increase in number of grants and the complexity of grants that we're administering. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the capacity to administer those grants and do it in a way that is compliant. The second is just dealing with the billing cycles and so forth. Is that we have the capacity to, we need to put more resources toward that billing cycle process to do it more efficiently. And in return, we would hopefully see more revenue coming in instead of sending so many items to collection. So new strategies, new processes that will bring us actually in the course of generating additional revenue to the city rather than not having the time or the resources to address those concerns. So that, that is one accountant that would be working hand in hand with the Health Department, residing at the Health Department, but working very closely and reporting to Finance. The second position has to do with Public Works and it's primarily on the project funding side. Again, we have an increased number of projects. They are getting more complex. We have a lot of federal and state money that is flowing through the city. They require a lot of adjustments. There's constant fluidity as we bid projects or decide this project's move forward. This one goes to design. This one has state money in it. What can we draw from the state? And there, there's always this shifting that's going on. And it's important that we're able to back up that process and also be able to support the additional complexity that goes along with it. And so we are bringing forward a financial coordinator position that goes with that. Now that, that position is a new term that we're using, but many of the duties are very much the same as an accountant might serve in that role or respect, but with a little bit of a twist. And, and I'll give you this example. I went to school for economics. I had two quarters in accounting. But I have done a lot of accounting in my career over time. I was very capable of doing it. But if I saw an accountant job, I would not apply for it because I don't have an accounting degree. So we have to think a little bit about how we term these positions in order to attract people to consider them and see themselves as being part of that position. So that's one of the reasons why you're kind of seeing that nuance of that name changes. We want to appeal to those people that might have a business degree, that have an economics degree, that can maybe also understand accounting that goes along with it. So that, that's part of some of the name change that goes with that. As far as, you know, some of our indicators and so forth, we've talked a great deal about what our policies are in terms of retail served targets. So we've also had a great opportunity to talk about our purpose and our focus, which is specific to our department, but really we look system-wide in terms of maintaining that long-term vision, that balanced approach and being able to anticipate and adapt. And then lastly, we have 31 FTEs. If the two additional FTEs are funded, our areas of core finance relate to accounts payable and receivable, purchasing and contract management, grant and specialized accounting, and then budget and forecasting planning. And my staff picked out this picture to represent themselves because this is how we are usually seen within the organization sometimes as the people of no or the people that are always saying stop or you can't do that or you're going too fast. Maybe it's because we keep embedding people in their departments to keep an eye on how things are going. But this is how we as staff see ourselves with superpowers and creativity and innovation and helping to support the city and as, as we move forward. So with that, I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counsel Jensen.
Thank you, Council Chair. One of the things you talked about in the two new positions is all the federal monitoring. And you weren't as specific as this, but will that financial coordinator really focus on the ARPA monitoring or assist in that regard? Because there's so many details that you have to monitor to make sure that we're in compliance, we don't have to pay it back.
No, not specifically for those. I mean, they will to a certain extent because Public Works will have a ARPA-funded project and Health has an ARPA-funded project. And they also have what we don't, when we talk about ARPA, we're talking about the direct assistance that we received. But ARPA was a huge bill. Many of the grants that Health did receive were through ARPA. They just weren't from our direct allocation. So they will work directly with those. But most of the compliance and so forth that we're doing, we're absorbing within our accounting staff, within finance. We, we've kept a very close touch on the ARPA stuff just within our office because of just concerns with compliance and making sure we're sticking with that. There is a, you know, there is a lot that will go along with administration that ARPA funds and it will last for years. And just to give an example, you know, a lot of these that we've done sub-grant recipient agreements, we have to go out and monitor them every year. We have to be. Our, our accounting staff is going to go out and do, I wouldn't say many audits, but they, they're going to pull invoices and, and make sure that they stay compliant to ensure that we as a city stay compliant. That's our responsibility.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And just staying on top of that is going to be of huge importance, like you just said. My final question, if I may, what's that restaurant with all the stuff on the walls? You're missing the Super Troopers.
Oh, is that what it is? I didn't even pick the picture. So never seen the movie.
Other questions? Counsel Bronco.
One thing that you mentioned that I think is absolutely dead on, and I just want to commend you for that, is kind of the, the willingness to be flexible in terms of title and degree and background when we're finding these people. I know that, you know, we're in an environment where it's a little bit challenging to, to get the staff. I know that, you know, we're in an environment where it's a little bit challenging to get the staff that we want. And I always say, hey, if you want to invent the airplane, hire two bicycle mechanics because it's not always what, you know, if we can break that logjam of saying you've got to have an accounting degree, or you've got to have a business degree, or you've got to be an economist, well, you don't have to have that. What you have to have is the ability to get the job done. And we should be looking at a broader scope of people who have a diverse range of abilities and talents and experiences, and bring them in and interview them. And a lot of those people that might not fit the skeletal, traditional list of qualifications for that position are actually going to turn out to be the most creative, dynamic, and effective employees.
Absolutely agree. Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Nitzer.
Yeah, thank you. Two things. First of all, kind of tagging off of what Counselor Starr had mentioned, just by happenstance, I was in City Hall, and I saw the good work that your Facilities Team was doing in the remodeling. So seeing the trades that we have is really great. So we don't have to hire a plumber every time and a carpenter, so that was good. Regarding the two new FTEs, first being the accountant at Public Health, I assume, I think, I don't like to call people out, so I'll just say first names. Well, you know who I'm talking about. Amy over there in Health. I have heard that the workload is increasing. Is that going to be to kind of help that out?
That's exactly, yeah. We'll work hand-in-hand with that functionality to alleviate some of the stress that's being experienced there and make sure we stay on track with.
Just because there's so many grants and so many things that they have to deal with?
Grants, and, you know, everything medical-related continues to become increasingly complex, billing cycles. If there's Medicaid expansion, that's going to add just even another layer. But just managing sources and uses of funds. There has been, you know, just generally from a national basis since the pandemic, a real awareness of public health, which has allocated more resources to that. And we've been, benefit, we benefited from the opportunity to access those resources, but we also have to make sure that we have the systems in place to make sure we're managing them appropriately.
And it's not maybe here nor there, but why not just have another position live under Health versus reporting to you?
Because it creates this nexus between Finance and those departments. So because, you know, compliance, we are reliant in our audit. Our audits are, audit those grants, those federal grants every single year, different departments, different grants that they may be testing. And it impacts our audit situation. And so it's just nice to have a nexus. It has worked really well with the housing, and it was just something that we've had for a while. And just recognize that that might be a model that we need to be more using on a more regular basis in other opportunities.
So you don't have departments or individuals over here that could be affecting the total financial picture in your grant compliance because you don't have any, you know, reporting authority or whatever, but...
Correct. And we've been working on centralizing grants and grant compliance overall within the city because of the compliance aspect. That's one of the reasons we added a compliance or a grants person here to our staff within the last year as well, as well as dealing with disadvantaged business enterprise opportunities to make sure that our city is complying with our responsibilities when it comes to DBE, which we hadn't resourced to that extent. So that's kind of a shared position between those two opportunities, and they do somewhat go hand-in-hand. But we are rolling out a more consolidated grant reporting system within the city. We've just kind of grown to a point. We are very decentralized in grants. People just kind of applied as they wanted. Now we have to be a little bit more thoughtful in what we apply for and the amounts that we apply for, and is it worth the amount of work that we're putting into it if we're applying for that size of a grant?
Okay, good idea. And finally, the account, the financial coordinator in Public Works. So it's going to be under you, otherwise I would just ask Public Works, but you could probably answer it. We have Dean, who's the Business Operations Manager, and, but I don't know if he was doing so much. He might have more under his umbrella now than he used to in the past, like the operations piece. Because I used to, he did, you know, you do a lot of analysis in terms of like the enterprise funds and a lot of just the business stuff. So is this person going to be assisting him or underneath him, or is this completely separate from the enterprise stuff?
We'll be associated with that, but work specifically on the project financing side, which would be more in Shannon Austin's position, so working hand-in-hand with her as we work the project financing piece and with engineering. So there's a whole piece to that.
So when you say project financing, do you just mean like capturing federal funds for road projects and stuff like that? Is that what we're talking about?
Correct. Yep. That's what we're looking at, and managing those resources as they're coming through and ensuring compliance and allocation of sources and uses of where they're going.
Got it. Thanks.
Other questions? Counsel Starr.
Yes. Director, one of the things you talked about was some part-time help with implementing new accounting software and part of that. I guess I'd like to beat the drum of how we're working with other government entities in our city and counties. What do they, what does Minnehawha or Lincoln County use? I mean, is it, I mean, could one of our people go there to help? Could their people help us? How are we interacting? And then versus what the school district does in those same type of...
It's a good question. I mean, with the county, we share, we both are using Tyler Munus, you know, for our accounting system and softwares. And we, in the past, sometimes shared expertise and so forth related to that piece and challenges that we may have each had. But in terms of some of the additional pieces of software that we work to implement to create efficiencies, whether it's travel, P Card, some of that, I wouldn't say that we do, you know, we really have a connected relationship with either of those entities related to that. Not that it's a bad idea. We just haven't really focused in on that area or that opportunity.
And I guess the point of me bringing it up is that I think most of us in the diocese, or all of us in the diocese, would encourage that, that intergovernmental ability to function because it's one taxpayer, and it's a matter of what pocket it comes out. If there's savings, or worse yet, one county invests in one GIS system, and the other one invests in a different one, and we're in a third and trying to share data. And that just happens to be the example that was off the top of my head. But if we're, you know, if there's fleet savings, if there's, you know, buying opportunities that can save other units of government, because obviously we're going to be the largest in that group. But if we can combine some of those projects, and I think we do on a regular basis, you hear about it all the time, that we were able to combine some things to purchase together, whether it's steel or pipe or vehicle. So again, just the point, making the point that I think we would like you to encourage that.
Yeah, I definitely think we have room for improvement probably in that, be more proactive in that effort area. We just get sometimes so focused in what we do as a city or counties, and we get involved in the day-to-day. We don't sometimes think about that, but I think that'd be wise.
And ours is the only way, and we have to do it our way, and if they want to come along, that's fine. But we're not willing to budge one way or the other, not just us, but it's kind of a human nature thing that...
Absolutely.
We're the most important part of it.
Other questions, counsel? I see none. I thank you very much for your presentation. I've got one, just one comment on, I personally will struggle with the full-time employees that are not police or a street department, which seem to be the two biggest citizen interactions that I get is about safety in our streets. So when it comes to all the other positions, kind of got to scratch my head a little bit, figure out, is an accountant more important to the city, or is a police officer more important? Just wanted to throw that out there. With that, we go to public comment. If there's anybody here for public comment, now is the time to step forward. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Oh. Missed that? Okay, here we are in public comment.
I am here. Okay, hi. Well, hello. My name is Jordan. I took the day off from work. I wanted to talk to you all because Art Holden developed a nice little spreadsheet breaking down our investment strategies for bikes and pedestrians in the city. And currently sounds like we have a very small amount of dollars going to pedestrian projects and bikability projects. We do not have specific project numbers for those projects. Art had put out an email, sent it to a lot of active transportation folk. I guess I'm the only one who showed up, so I decided to come here and speak on the matter. The future of transportation in our city is not the car. As we are seeing in supply chain issues, gas shortages, all of these things, we are seeing a massive, massive issue with our sprawl model. Now, I am a 24'7" 365 walker. I do not own a car. I exclusively walk. And I did so, two years ago, I started making that choice because I knew that the future of cities were bent on walkability. So as we continue to sprawl, as we continue to acquire land and annex land and create liabilities for ourselves in the future, as we've seen with the amount of dollars that are being spent on reconstruction and repaving and things like that, I would want this council to consider the need to increase the amount of dollars going to pedestrian projects, amount of dollars going to bikability projects, considering that as a necessity moving forward. And also consider, especially in looking at the budget proceedings, as I am the only person that showed up from the public, a need for a participatory process, a participatory budgeting process, which has been demonstrated across the United States, across the world, as a way to engage people in giving funding that is directly accessible to neighborhoods to identify specific needs in their neighborhoods and potentially have those dollars available to them to deploy. These systems have been demonstrated across the United States. We have the accessibility to do it. There's some really wonderful things happening at the Union Gospel Mission right now. We've just established the Community Revitalization Think Tank in collaboration with Habitat for Humanity. Last week, we moved about four truckloads of garbage off a property to stop a woman from getting evicted. And that was a direct action that came about just by walking around the neighborhood. Community liaisons are the, I think, the future. I think when we talk about public health, we need to have people on the ground actually interacting with people who know the language, who know the culture of the neighborhood. As much as I love technology and I love data and all those things, there's so much that could be done by someone just walking through the neighborhood. So I would love, in consideration of this budget, looking at other programs, participatory budgeting programs, neighborhood liaisons, look at Minneapolis. They're doing a great job up there with that particular program. So these are things that can be deployed, this year even. So I would love to talk more about it. We are doing regular meetings at the mission, 4:30 Wednesdays. You are all welcome to join, and we will do a walkabout of the neighborhood at 5:30. We're doing this every Wednesday. This is where we identify specific projects to deploy, and this is direct mutual aid. So, yeah, that's what I got. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Counsel Jensen, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there are no objections, I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to one of our employees. Shawna Nelson is celebrating 10 years of service to the City of Sioux Falls. I just want to shout that out. I will be delivering her token for her service anniversary coin here to her here after this meeting and probably likely tomorrow. But just want to commend her on her 10 years of service to the City of Sioux Falls.
Thank you. Now, we are adjourned.